Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call the October 2nd, 2018 Union County Planning Board to order. Our first item to discuss tonight, I need a motion to make Christopher Patrick a voting member of...
So moved.
So moved. Thank you very much, Patrick. We appreciate it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Combination between Russell and Charles. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. You are a voting member, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. You have before you, let me make a comment real quick on behalf of myself, and I hope the board feels this way. I'd like to recognize the staff and say thank you to the way that y'all been working getting this information out to us. I am doing the typing, putting it in the mail, getting it just very timely where we have a good amount of time to study and look at it, and we appreciate that very, very much.
Absolutely.
Okay? Do we have any recommendations as far as additions or deletions to this agenda as it was sent out? If not, I'd like a motion to approve, or if we need to add anything, et cetera. Do we have a motion of any kind?
Make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Russell has made a motion to approve as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Patrick? Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Brian, did I call for approval of the agenda?
You just did the agenda now that you answered that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Good. Okay. Let's go ahead for the minutes. I hope everybody's had a chance to read the minutes from the September 11th, 2018 meeting, and do we have any additions, or deletions, or corrections, or anything that needs to be made that you might have found as you read those minutes? If not, I'd ask a motion to approve.
I make motion we approve the minutes.
Thanks, Russell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Charles, thank you. All those in favor to accept those as presented, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. For tonight's business, item number six, we're here to discuss CZ 2018-006, located at 3418 East Highway 218. Lee, we ask you to discuss this with us, please.
Again, as you stated, this is case CZ 2018-006. This is a piece of property that you, some of you guys have seen before. This, this came back to you in 2017, and at that time, it was proposed to be a automobile repair shop. So this plan's been slightly modified. Really what this is, is really more of a change in, in conditions, or change in uses, but the ordinance requires that that be treated as, as a new rezoning. Really, the main reason for that, for that is, this was zoned RA40 prior to 2017. In 2017, came to you guys, you gave a positive recommendation to rezone it, the board of commissioners ultimately approved the rezoning to a B4 district with the only allowed use being a personal vehicle and maintenance repair shop. So, being that they're now going to, looking to possibly change that use to something different, it needs to be rezoned to a different district with a different use. So, what they've applied for is another B4 conditional district with the allowed use being a, a building and maintenance service facility. That, that includes, I think what the applicant does is a plumbing business, and that would allow the use of this property as a, as a plumbing business. So, the property's currently zoned, it looks kind of funny on your, on your agenda package, I think, because it says the current zoning's B4 conditional, and they're requesting a rezoning to B4 conditional. But it's those conditions and the uses is why it's coming before you. The current owner is Jeff Hudson, and the applicant is David Olstad. Again, the location is 3418 East Highway 218, and let me see if the GIS pulled up, and I can zoom in to show you where that property is. So it's just west, so this is the property right here.
Mm-hmm.
Let me call that. So it's just west of the intersection with Love Mill Road, if you're familiar with, with that area. You want to see some pictures? I have some pictures that we've, we've taken. Of course, that's our, that's our rezoning sign. This would be in the driveway of the property, looking east down 218 toward the, toward the intersection. This, this car is actually turning right off of Love Mill onto 218, so this is looking toward the intersection. This would be looking left, or, or west, so there's kind of a little hill there, so that's, that's looking down 218 toward the west. This is looking back onto the property from, from the, where 218 is. This is also looking back onto the property, and that's looking directly across the street from this little gravel driveway. Current, like I said, the property's currently zoned B4 conditional, with the allowed use being a automobile repair shop. Surrounding land uses, fairly rural in nature. You've got a little commercial node at the corner of Love Mill Road and 218, and then, for the most part, everything else is pretty much low-density residential, a lot of vacant parcels, a lot of agricultural parcels. As far as utilities in the area, there's some, some of the houses in the area, some of the businesses in the area. There's a water line on 218, but that's really the only place that exists. The vast majority of utilities are, are going to be individual wells and septic systems. There is no, there is no sewer. There's no public sewer in the area. Again, as far as the land use history, the parcel was rezoned from RA40 to B4 conditional back in 2017. Is, is current zoning in the area? Of course, this is on B4. This is, this has been updated. I'm not sure why that still shows RA40, because it's been updated for a while, but this should be business. But as you can see, the vast majority of everything else is zoned RA40. You've got a little business cluster at the intersection, another little business a little bit further down 218, but everything else is RA40. A comprehensive plan, this property is in what we consider to be the agricultural area of Union County. Pull that up, so you can see it. So you can see everything out there is green, so that means agricultural area. Agricultural areas are identified in the plan to protect prime agricultural lands and active farming, or reducing the potential for conflict from incompatible land uses. There can be some small-scale commercial activity located near major intersections, which this would be. As far as our comments go, again, the property does lie inside the agricultural area designation, and those areas should generally be reserved for agricultural and low-density residential. However, some commercial activity is anticipated to serve the surrounding community, especially near major intersections and close to existing commercial activity. This property is located near a fairly major intersection, and it is adjacent to some existing commercial activity, and it was previously rezoned. It is zoned commercial now, so they, there could be a commercial operation on this site if it met all the conditions of the previous rezoning. So based on those factors, it appears that rezoning this to B4 conditional, to allow for a building and maintenance service facility would be consistent with the plan and with previous approvals. If anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the board? Okay. Appears there's no questions, Lee.
Okay.
Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant that would like to speak? Could you come up, if you would, give us your name and address? We'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name's David Olstad. I'm the owner of TDR Plumbing. I currently live at 801 Rock Hill Church Road. Been there since 88, so we're 10 or 15 minutes back to 18, toward Mint Hill. We operate out of Indian Trail right now in a leased facility, and as you probably all know, the economy is, is booming right now, and we're running out of space. We've got nine trucks. We do commercial contract work, so we're not a, we're not a service company. We, we don't come fix your toilet, or your sink, or anything like that. We, we go out and we do new buildings, upfits, any, anything from $10,000 to $150,000 worth of work. The guys leave somewhere around 7:30, quarter to 8:00, and they return anywhere from 5:00 to 7:00 at night. Mostly, probably around 6:00 would be a good average for them coming in. They don't, they don't all come in at once. They're all, they're scattered all over Mecklenburg, Union, Lincoln, Gaston. We do work in Rock Hill. We do work up around Lake Norman, so the, the times that they come in are just, they're, they're scattered all over the place. We pretty much stayed with the same footprint as the auto repair business. We've got some asphalt parking out front, which was required by Union County. Otherwise, I'd just have gravel there, because I don't, I don't have anybody coming in except for maybe some sales guys, a few deliveries during the week, for the materials to stock the shop. We would put a 6,000 square foot building up and use the front part for offices, and the, and the whole back area would basically be to store materials, fixtures, fittings, pipe, just like we do now. We would put a fence around the building to secure it, to make sure that the trucks are secure at night. Whatever's not asphalted would be, would be gravel, parking, where the, where the trucks would park, and, and all that. There would be a dumpster within the fenced-in area, and we store PVC pipe outside. Of course, it's, it's kept neatly stacked. It's not scattered all over the place or anything like that. And basically, everything else is inside the building.
So if you look at the red line there, kind of a triangle area...
Yes, sir.
None of that's going to be fenced. It'll only be around the...
It would just be around the perimeter of the building, but you know, it, it would probably come out on one side close to 50 feet, so that there's room to get the trucks in. We own a couple excavators and trailers, so we have to have room to be able to get in there and turn those around and drop them off when we're not using them, and come in. There's two entrances to the property right now, existing driveways, let's call it. We would probably put gates at both of those, of course, well back off the road, so that you could get in the property without being on 218, and then you would come through the gate into the fenced-in area.
We saw a small house on that just a minute ago. Is that going to stay, or...
Yes, sir. I, I'm, from my understanding, Union County said I can use that for storage. I, I don't know right now. It looks like it's, I've been inside, it's, it's outfitted for like a small apartment, but I would just use it for storage, and maybe eventually tear it down, see if we need it or not.
Good. Thank you, sir. Does the board have any more questions?
I, I do want to interject one thing, if I can. I heard you say something about storing materials outside. We weren't aware of that when we met with, we, we met with your realtor. Outside storage would not be allowed in B4.
Okay.
Everything would have to be stored inside the facility.
We, we can, we can do that.
Okay. I, I just wanted to...
We can put our PVC pipe inside.
Okay.
With 6,000 square feet, we'll have plenty of room to do that.
Okay.
And if it, if that's the only...
I mean, parking the trucks outside is completely fine, but the equipment part is the, the big... So I just wanted to...
The, the pipe is a problem?
Yes.
Not, not the excavators?
Right. That's equipment. All that stuff would be fine.
Okay.
Well, it does say equipment outside storage, so let me look that definition up. We, we talk about specifically more trucks and stuff like that, so I need that.
Understand. We've only, we only own two excavators, and they're on trailers when they're there, and they, they, they sit there until we're needed, and, and most of the time, they're not there. Most of the time, they're out on jobs.
We would prefer that, did you know all the requirements, so you can make a form to...
Yes, sir. I agree 100% with y'all.
If, if one of the questions I have, this business is booming, is there room for expansion? Do you need expansion?
In that 6,000 square feet, yes. We're in 2,000 square feet right now, if that helps, and, and we're, we're busting at the seams, for lack of a better word.
There's nothing that would prevent you from, if you needed to expand, from coming back and getting plans to expand? I think right now, the building is approved with roughly about 6,000.
Yes. I think this might have been increased it a tad, but not, not all along.
So, so whatever you present is kind of what the plan says that you're allowed to do.
Okay.
If you presented, "I wanted to do 7,000 square foot," really, that's what would be approved if it gets approved, and so just be aware...
And so going, going down the road, as if, if y'all approve it, and the commissioners approve it, that if I have plans drawn up, a formal set of plans, they would need to match what I'm presenting to y'all tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good.
Five years from now, take it one step further.
Yes.
If you need another 3,000 or 4,000 square feet. Brian, would he have to, would he have to come back before the board? In five years, say seven years, business is still booming, and he needs more square footage? You got to come back?
He would actually have to go back through the process to get a little footprint expanding. And now, again, unfortunately, it's a process, so that's why I was asking, is that enough for you for expansion? Because what you asked for today is what you're approved for. Anything that's bigger than that has to come back, goes through the process. Always go lower if you can't go to it.
Gotcha. Gotcha. I, I think the 6,000 is going to be more than enough with, even if we say were to add three more trucks, four more trucks, I think we could adequately supply those trucks out of that warehouse.
Cool.
Thank you.
Just be aware of what you asked for is your limitation.
Yes, sir.
We're not telling you 7,000 in the wrong building, what you asked for is what you're meant to do.
I completely understand.
You can always go down from what you asked for.
Right.
You just can't go more.
I follow you.
And just looking at the ordinance, I think from, just, just from, just from, just a quick reading, the storage of any kind of vehicle, whether it was a truck, or, you know, like a Bobcat or something like that...
Yes.
That would be fine outside, but any kind of equipment, like if, you know, I don't know exactly what you might use on your job, that would be big enough to, to have to store outside, but, you know, I can imagine some construction companies could probably use jackhammers and, you know, stuff like that.
We, we keep all that inside.
And that's fine.
We own, I, I understand what you're getting at, but we own jackhammers and, and wet vax, core drilling machines, but of course, all that's kept inside.
Okay. Good. So it sounds like the PVC pipe might be the only issue.
Might, yeah.
If you can store that inside, I think, I, I think we can work with that.
All right.
Using your PVC pipe, do you use like chemicals with that?
We use glue and primer with that, but that, that comes in, in cases...
How's that stored?
Of 24, and that's, that's also stored inside.
Is that separate from everything else, though?
It is.
Or is it like caged?
It is.
Okay.
What's the eve height of the building you plan, sir?
We would need 20 feet. I would need 20 feet to put, the pallet racks that we own right now are 16, so I would need 20 to build a forklift to pick it up off the pallet and bring it over and set it down, and that would be the low, the low height of the eve. So I would need 20 on the outside. I would imagine with the roof slope, it, it might get to 30 on the center, maybe 35.
Any other questions? Okay.
I got one more.
Okay. Right here.
The, that little knoll that's in that, that street that's coming down...
Yes.
To where your driveway is going to be, how far away is that? I mean, are your trucks going to be able, like, be able to turn without somebody coming up fast on them?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And I would have to say 99% of the time, they're going to be turning away from Love Mill, going toward that knoll, so they're going to have to get, get, get across the street. But I, if I had to guess, I'd say that's 150 to 200 feet from the, from the closest drive, and I would probably have them leave through the other drive, which would give us another 100 to 150 feet, so that you do have time, because the, looking to the right or looking to the east of Love Mill, you have a much better view.
Right.
And then looking back toward the west, so leave out of the second drive, which gives them a, a much more better buffer.
Okay.
When it comes to supplies, are you talking about, say, a 20, 24-foot truck?
Oh, no, sir. These, these are box trucks that, that deliver to us. They, they usually don't have five or six cases of items on it, you know, and...
There's not going to be an 18-wheeler, though?
No. No, sir. No, sir. No, sir.
It's like a UPS or FedEx type?
That, that's right. That size truck is what we normally get, and you, when we get PVC pipe, we buy it by the pallet, so it comes in on a little bit larger truck, but it's just a flatbed that might be a little bit longer than a UPS truck, but I don't get any deliveries on, from tractor trailers.
Now, you were asking about the, the knoll a while ago. On the previous rezoning, that was a little bit higher intensity land use, because it was a, it was more of, I guess what you would consider a retail facility, where you had people coming and getting their whole change and leaving throughout the day.
Right.
And we had run that project by DOT, and that project wasn't going to require, by DOT standards, any improvements to 218. They weren't going to require a turn lane or anything. This is a lot lower intensity land use, because it's really an office and a warehouse, so the vehicle trips weren't going to be as, as many.
I was just curious on how, how far it was for them, when they're coming back at night, to turn into the driveway.
It was a concern we had previously on the, on the prior rezoning. That's why we reached out to DOT. We went, posted the sign. Bjorn and I, again, on the, last year, we looked at it, and we thought, man, that, that knoll was pretty close, and, you know, you've got a lot of traffic that moves pretty fast, so we did reach out to DOT just to get their, just to get their feedback.
And with them coming in, in the evenings, they'll be cresting that knoll, and, you know, they, by then, they should have a turn signal on well before that...
Right.
Indicating that they're going to be pulling into the property.
So the, the guys that you, you hired, they have their own vehicles there during the day?
That's correct.
And they pick up the trucks, and then they come back at night?
And then they come back in the evenings. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? From the board? Okay. Since there's none, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it very, very much. Do we have any other comments that need to be made? Would you come forward?
Yeah.
And state your name and address, please.
Lily and Melamides, 3339 East Highway 218, Monroe. So I'm across the street way setback. I actually, I was here when you guys were working through the auto shop issue, and my concern at that time was definitely the traffic, right? So, retail space, a lot of cars coming in and out. When you guys approved that rezoning, shortly thereafter, there was a lot of publicity about 218, all over the news. Sheriff started posting up different patrol cars and things. There was an accident not far from our house, where it actually took us an hour and a half to get home, even though, you know, we were right there, and I believe someone actually lost a limb or something like that, shortly after that had happened. So, we see a lot on that stretch of the road, is my point. I have no objections. I love the fact that this gentleman is trying to grow his business. I love the fact that he's trying to do it responsibly. My only concern, again, is just when you consider rezoning or approving the zoning condition, I ask that there be conditions put on there to ensure that if this gentleman decides not to go through with it, for whatever reason, or he has to sell in a couple of years, that it doesn't turn into a retail space, where we've got a lot of traffic coming in and out. And if it comes to that, and someone else wants to come in and request the rezoning, that we're back here talking about this, and hopefully, we can address some of the concerns of the community. That's it.
We appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate those comments. I don't see that, that could happen without being before the planning department, and then another session like we've got tonight.
Yeah. The, the condition on this one is that the only use that's allowed would be that, oh, shoot, what I call it?
Building and maintenance.
Building and maintenance service use, and that, that includes contractor-type stuff, so if it, you know, if, if he did want to sell it, and it was a, a retail-type use, or, or, or something even different than, than what he's wanting to do, it would have to come back through the same process.
Okay. Does the board at this time have any other comments, or does anybody want to take action on this tonight, or what's the thought and will of the board?
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to have any type of signage on the building, and if so, is it going to be lit up at all?
If we had a sign, it would not be lit up.
Okay.
And I haven't put any thought into that, really. Like I said, I, I do all my work through a group of contractors that I've done work for several years for, so I'm not, I'm not really out there advertising the company.
Right. What about the, like, the parking area, where your trucks are going to be parked at night? Is that going to be like some kind of security light for the...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we would need, we'd need some kind of light out there, because the guys get back at dark sometimes, to lock the truck up, lock the gate, and get back to the personal vehicle. So we'd have to have some kind of a yard light, maybe that type thing.
We have, it just, Patrick's going, just be aware that we have some lighting standards. They're not, they're not excessive, but it basically just says that you want lighting, and the light can't exceed a certain amount beyond your property.
Okay. Okay.
And, and usually, that's pretty easy to read, especially if you're only doing one or two light, like...
Right. And then that's all...
If you're going lower, it can be a little harder to read, but the standards are pretty, they're pretty easy to read.
And I think, I think they're even going to be easier if the light is more toward that existing, the, the B4 pieces next door, because the standard's a little bit more flexible next to a commercial zoning district than is residential's of the district, so...
Do we have a timeframe, Brian?
What?
Do we have a timeframe on when the lights can be on?
We do not have a standard for when they have to come on or go off.
Okay.
As long as they meet the, the light pollution requirements, it doesn't matter how long it goes on.
Okay.
If it became an issue, we could set something up on a motion light or something like that, where it stayed on for a period of time, and then cut off when guys left.
Generally, for us, as long as we meet that standard, where it doesn't go, we'd be on the property lines, just care if they go a little while or catch.
Right.
It's really your decision if you want to hit one or two.
I'm going to have motion lights, I bet you've got them running around. I do have.
Brian, let me ask you a question. Based on Patrick's comment, discussion that y'all just had, does that need to be a condition on approval of this?
We have standards within the ordinance, and I don't see that need to be...
We don't, there's no condition that he needs to check for?
Not in my view.
Okay. All right. Good deal.
The only condition I would suggest would be the standard condition that it must be have, be to all local, state, federal guidelines for, for the property. So when they get ready to build, when they go through, they have to meet all the requirements of the land use ordinance, have to be... of the land use ordinance, have to meet all the requirements of the building code, have to meet all the requirements of the health department. That's a general, just a general condition.
You don't have a problem with that, do you?
No, sir. Not at all.
Okay, all right, good.
I make a motion, we approve it with what he just said. CZ 2018 006, I, I make a motion, we approve it.
Thank you very much, Russell. The motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Charles. We appreciate that. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Black sign for the nays. Carry. Okay? All right. Thank you, folks. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. Appreciate the kindness that y'all shown, shown the board.
So just be aware, this is, this is a regulation that goes to the county commissioners.
Yes, sir.
It will be at their...
November meeting, which will be the first Monday in November.
There'll be a public hearing that's very similar to this, where people can come and speak. The board doesn't always make a decision at that meeting. They sometimes will wait until the second meeting to make a decision, but if there's no opposition, you can ask for them to consider making a decision. And, and a lot of times, they'll grant that if they feel like there's not a lot of opposition. Do recommend that you attend that, because you're the applicant, and they might ask some questions for us, but at least one more step towards the final decision.
And that, and that first Monday is the, is November 5th.
The 5th.
Sorry, it'll be at 7:00 in this room.
Okay. We appreciate y'all coming out tonight, and drive safely as you return.
Thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business.
You bet. Okay, looking at item number seven. Planning staff report?
Uh, the secret shortcut, small rate plan, will go to the board commissioners on October 15th. And we don't have a date scheduled yet for the US Central Board Martial Department study. It'll be, those who are more likely to know in December. And also, we need to schedule a training session. We haven't had a training session yet, but I think some of the new members suggested and afraid that that might be up there. So with the next meeting, we have a, a, a small agenda, we'll, we'll put into one of those.
That may need to be a special meeting.
We may have to actually talk to you about a special meeting. We've got a lot of things that seem to be coming down the pipe, so...
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
If it have, if it happens to be a special meeting, can we handle that through a doodle pole?
Absolutely.
Sure. Great, that'd be perfect.
And, and without having everyone here, it's hard to do that anyway, but we can certainly set a doodle pole out and...
Fantastic. Does everybody know what a doodle pole is?
No.
Anything after January 1st, any time of the day is fine with me, because I'm retired after that.
Congratulations, but so, anytime after January...
Anytime after January 1st.
We don't really, we're, we're hoping to do it before the end of the year, because obviously, we have new board members. It's a good time, so we get them acclimated to the process, but it all depends on kind of, everybody's schedule is...
Brian, I'll put you on the spot and ask you to explain what a doodle pole is.
So a doodle pole is essentially, it's, it's almost like an email, really, that goes out to you, and what it will have is a number of choices for dates that you are available, and essentially, you say, well, I'm available for this date, but I'm not available by this one. And when you do that, it basically sends it out back to us, and we know what everyone's schedule is, so that we can pick the date that actually works for everybody, rather than all of us sitting here saying, well, I can't do it on this date, and I can't do it on that date. You tell us what you're available, and then we pick the date that everybody works. It's like a, it's, it's usually an email leak to give you the ability to go ahead and select this date.
Now, Charles, just to make it clear, it hadn't been that long ago that I asked the same question, so...
Now, Everett, we may have to call him on the phone, but Everett does a good email there.
That's your job.
Now, is this training for all the people, or does...
It would be intended for everyone. We understand if someone can't come. It would be intended for the top ones.
Okay. Any other thing on staff report? Okay. Any comments, Christopher, from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Patrick?
I'm good. The one that we just did, does, do we have to put a, any kind of special thing saying that it's going to be that and only that? That, like, if he decides that...
No, that was, that was part of the application.
That's part of it, okay.
So that was one of those, that was a condition that he agreed to as part of the, as part of the application. Of course, you guys added the one that, that we suggested, but no, if it's something else, even if they want to do, somebody wants to do an auto repair facility, if this one's approved and they want to do an auto repair facility, they'll have to come back, so...
Well, I'm, I'm glad that he specified that it was a plumbing, a plumbing business, because when I read building and maintenance service, I'm thinking it's like a cleaning business. You know, guys go out with the buffers and stuff and do, do office buildings and stuff. That's what I was thinking. I'm thinking like chemicals all over the place.
Charles, any comments?
No.
Russell, anything?
No.
From transportation?
Nothing much. I mean, doing the same stuff we've been doing.
We, just might let everybody know, we did have a, a deal in Waxall with the, the group about the Parkway. Bjorn was there, did an excellent job, and, and also, on behalf of myself, please tell him thank you and all, so... Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Patrick? All those in favor, raise your right hand. We have no nays, I would assume, so...
What? Nobody wants to say?
We are now adjourned.